Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting, Town Council, January the 16th. Roll call please.
Ben and Chris.
McCowley here.
Ben and Chris.
I'm going to do a question.
Proud to be the staff of the barn, please stand for the invitation and the flag, please.
Thank you for shelter, protection, and your support this inside mass meeting. Bless the people of Cape Charles, you give us peace, and our Jesus.
I declare allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, before we recognize the leaders, I would like to just take a few moments to say farewell to our, we have a change of command. I'd like to say farewell to Charles Samba Brown, Chief of Police, after 12 years of service in his town, his home. And Heather, please, to Alan, Charles.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to tell Chief Samba Brown that it's been a pleasure to work with him over the last 12 years as former councilman, as well Chief of Police, and all of us at the town hall wish you, and we do know your number. And you will be here.
Thank you. And I want to give him the bird.
I want to pitch up the website. You don't need me.
I know, I should be in worship.
Yes, you too.
Don't do my walk. Just smile.
Dad gone? Dad gone? Samba, will you stay there while we introduce the other part of the change? We'd like to welcome to everyone our new Chief of Police, Jimmy Pruitt, also from Cape Charles, and a police officer for 12 years, 15 years, that just came right out, 15 years, got mama right over there. So, a very proud of you, welcome, congratulations. Where's Samba?
Okay, here it is.
Another group hug.
Door, you get in the middle.
Okay. Don't get my boots.
Don't get your boots.
Boots. All right, thank you both. Good luck, we see.
Watch your speed going on.
All right, at this time, I would like to recognize Mr. George Proto, who is the President of the Cape Charles Business Association, and he's going to give us an update on what the business association has been up to. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me all right? I have only two or three copies of the presentation I'm going to be giving, if anyone would like to read it, and share.
We can share too, you can have mine.
Anyone interested, or, all right, you'll just follow, that's fine. I'd like to start with a thank you, I'd like to thank the town of Cape Charles, many people in the town have helped us, but in particular Heather Arco's, Bob Panic, Jen Lewis, and Smitty Dye's have been involved in various of the activities we have done very intimately, they've helped us quite a bit. I want to thank the merchants of Cape Charles for their cooperation in running many specials and discounts to promote events in the town. I'd also like to thank Aqua for the frequent use of their facilities for our meetings. And then, there were many volunteers and contributors to help make our Fall Festival such a success, I have 20 names here, I'm not going to read them all, there are a few that I thought would just point out. Air Baldwin donated a tent, the use of the tent and labor to put it up. Ed and Bonnie DeAngelis allowed us the use of their building rent-free when we had an issue with the weather. The Neville Brothers pitched a tent for us that the museum loaned to us. Suzanne Farr also loaned us a tent. And there are many people, other people on here, please look at the names, they did a lot to help us. And I also want to give my personal thanks to the board members for their hard work this year. I feel we accomplished a great deal, we could not have done that without such a great board, they're hardworking, they're smart, and they get the job done. I'm going to start with a quick overview of our year. The Cape Charles Business Association has been active in the community over the past year, and it's financially healthy. I'll go through the finances in a minute or two and show you that, just a brief overview. We've supported a number of major activities, these include the Cape Charles By the Bay website, Harbor for the Arts. We were sponsors as a partner for the Tall Ships Grant for the application for a 2014 grant. We supported Pirates and Wenches, Harbor for the Holidays, and the Grand Illumination. Our Fall Festival was revitalized, and we consider it to be a success based on all the feedback we've gotten. Our plans for 2014 are going to include trying to increase an emphasis on educating the people of the town and the businesses relative to economic development. We think that's an area where we can be of help, and to be honest with you, we're going to have to learn about economic development ourselves, none of us represents ourselves as being expert in that area, but we'll learn together. The major challenges we have looking forward are to build membership and finding volunteers, finding volunteers is, that's not a surprise for anyone in this town, but I would say, a town of 1,000 people, I feel people are in general very active. There's an awful lot that gets done, people are stretched thin, and somehow or other we have to find a way to, we have to find a way to keep doing the things that we're doing without overburdening people. So, that's going to be a tough thing to do, but we'd like to try to do that. I'll say a little bit about the operations of the Business Association. The new board was elected on March 14th, 2013. I am the President, Andy Bookholz is the Vice President, Greg Kohler the Secretary, and Muriel Melton, who is not here at the moment, is Treasurer. The current board members also include Sandy McFaul, Susan Lindford, Tiffany Moore, Ed DeAngelis, and Donna Kohler. Donna was elected as a board replacement, a board member replacement, on November 2013 after Dave Burden resigned from the board. We also applied for and received support from the town of Cape Charles for our 2013 operating expenses, for which we were very grateful. And the last thing is, we moved our account, we had an account with the Bank of America, we moved that from the Bank of America to the NMA Credit Union, and we also established a separate account for the skipjack funds or the East Harbor Boat Works. I'll talk about the Boat Works in the next chart. We wanted to move for two reasons. First, we wanted to support an organization that moved into our town to fill in a gap that happened when Bank of America left. And the other, the other thing is that we are, we didn't want to have to go across the bay all the time to deal with, to deal with, you know, deposits and so on. So, take a look at the financial status. As of 3/14, 3/14, our general fund had $33,008.3 in it, and the East Harbor Boat Works had $5,000 in it. That's the new, the new account that we established. Now, the East Harbor Boat Works was a fund, was money given to the Business Association specifically to renovate a skipjack, and for no other purpose than that. So, we don't want that money to become co-mingled with the general funds, we broke it out, and we're working on a plan to do something with that relative to the skipjack with Tom Bonadeo and others who are interested in that, in that project. So, that money is there. As of the 1st of January of this year, we had $29,019.19 in the general fund, and we got a whole $6.41 in interest in the East Harbor Boat Works Fund.
$29,000.
I beg your pardon?
Twenty-nine thousand, two thousand nine.
Two thousand nine, I wish. Sorry about that. And we currently have 22 members and individuals that have renewed their membership. All right, I'd like to go through the details of the activities we've done. We provided financial support and/or partnering with the following organizations. With the Cape Charles By the Bay website, we donated $500 towards that. We gave $450 for the Harbor for the Arts Grant, and $100 for the Harbor for the Holidays. We also volunteered for the Pirates and Wenches, we sponsored and provided prize money for a storefront competition for that, and we ran a tattoo table. For the Grand Illumination, we provided free hot chocolate for the employees, that was a donation from Miriam. The businesses in the community have, have been generous in giving discounts and providing promotions to promote various events and help to draw visitors into the town. So, the three that were business sponsored by the business organization, the first is that we sponsored Cherrystone Camper Discounts, 33 businesses signed up for that, that was driven by Malcolm Hayward. We promoted and gave out discounts for attendees of the blessings of the fleet, and we also organized Shop Local Saturday. We've also done some, had some educational and informational opportunities for the community. Earlier in the year, we met with Bob Panic and Charles McSwain to discuss the PSA line and economic development as they relate to the town and the county. PSA line I'm talking about is the one that would run from 13 to the town, to the town of Cape Charles, which is the treatment plan. And based on that, we scheduled two informational, public informational meetings. The first was a meeting on the proposed PSA line, that was, the presentations were given by Bob Panic, and this meeting raised concerns, caused us to wish to raise concerns publicly with the town and the county relative to this proposal, and we requested that that project be put on hold until those issues are appropriately addressed. We also sponsored a public presentation by Charles McSwain, at that time he was the newly appointed North Hampton County Director of Economic Development, and he presented on the county's economic development plans. And those were both public meetings. The Fall Festival, I've already mentioned, that was revitalized, we chose a products of the shore theme. The goal of that was to educate visitors and townspeople as to the products made on the shore and in surrounding areas. It was also aimed to provide an opportunity for other service organizations to tell people about their contributions to the community and raise money for their operations. As far as we know, that worked out pretty well for those organizations, they seem to be happy, and I hope you'll be able to continue to do that going forward. There was an art competition among arts and dress participants, a biggest and best food competition, and all the feedback we've gotten is that the Fall Festival was sounding success, and we're going to be doing it again this year. In addition to that, we organized and funded the Virginia Love Sign to attract visitors, and that was located at the point, I hope all of you saw it, and that was timed to coincide with the Fall Festival and the Birdie Festival, and hopefully drew some people up the street to the businesses that were up the street from where we had the Fall Festival and involved in the Birdie Festival as well. We also have either established or strengthened ties to other organizations in the community. We're a member of the North Hampton County Chamber of Commerce, we are a member of the Eastern Shore Virginia Prestables Board, and we have two seats on that board that are designated for the CCBA. They're now filled by Greg Kohler and John Dempster. We acquired membership on the Eastern Shore Space Tourism Board. The goal of that board is to promote tourism over the entire Eastern Shore of Virginia relative to Wallops Island Rocket Launches. Now, the thing about this, by the way, that's nice is that the board recognizes that the primary focus of people is on Shinkenee and Wallops Island, bridges and launches, that they are looking for ways to spread that out through the entire Eastern Shore, to Acnamac and North Hampton County, so that people get a sense of what we are all about. And the idea is, you go to Wallops Island, you see history in the making, you see the future, but you can, you can go back 100 or 200 years in time in other, in other parts of this county, and you can see what we came from. And by the way, if you want to watch a rocket launch, you can see it from here, things aren't blocking it, you get a really good view if you go over to Oyster now, it's got a very bright star in the sky, but you'll still be able to see it. And then, we also had the membership on the Our Town Ranch Committee and the Cape Charles By the Bay Tourism, that was great, myself. As to the future, we would like to work with the town and county to help them, sponsor a joint workshop on economic development, we want to expand membership, we do want to work toward becoming self-sustaining financially. We intend to develop a cadre of hands-on volunteers that we can pull on for specific needs. We are working on, with the town, relative to a Love Sign permanent installation, and we're looking to, you know, to decide where should we locate it, what should the design be, how do we build it, and so on, again, as a means to attract more visitors. We want to continue to expand and improve the Fall Festival, I asked you to mark October 11th, 2014, the next Fall Festival, and that will coincide with the Birdie Festival. I think that's it, does the board have any questions?
At this time, Amanda, public comment, will you have your sign up? Okay, item five consent agenda, I need approval of the agenda format, I already have one correction or deletion, item A under new business, we need to delete that, that will be in the month of March. And that's all the change I have. So, with that changed, can I get a motion to approve the?
Second.
Any objections? So moved, and next item approval of the minutes?
I have two minutes, corrections, and I can, I can take them on time to make them, it really matters.
So, approval of the minutes?
Can I make the motion that we approve the minutes, including the modification for corrections for the two items? For the minutes, one of the wisdoms, the baby's.
Second.
Any questions? So moved, next item, action item Treasury Report.
The Treasurer's not here this evening, everyone has Treasurer's report, so I will be, I will be reporting for the Treasurer tonight, as of December 31st, and our cash position, the Shore Bank checking account, as of December 31st, there's $199,159. Shore Bank checking account facility fees reserve, $95,216. Local challenge investment pool, library fund CD, $68,504, which will be transferred into Shore Bank account. The local government investment in restricted funds at $436,614. The Shore checking account will have a transfer to our LGIP account, that's as a result of the tax, the investment. Distorted cash balance, we have LGIP real development, $97,301. At December, Shore Bank savings account, these funds, $1,231. US Bank, we are interest-free loans, $257,582. Cuddly cash holding reserve, $356,114. And under the tax collection comparisons, I anticipate, the meals tax is up by $31,963.65 compared to last December, 2014. And our real estate taxes as of December 31st is down $36,261.65, and I believe that is due to the timing of the real estate tax in December. The transit oxygen tax compared to last year, at this time, is up $5,425.55. On the second page, we have revenues versus expenditures, and the general fund, the revenues current year-to-date, $1,678,471, and expended, $963,375. Other utilities revenues, year-to-date, $1,041,300, expended, $701,970. The harbor revenues, year-to-date, $571,199, and expended, $541,071. And sanitation revenues, expended, $87,103, and, revenue's $87,103, and expended, $70,937. And there's been no changes in the capital expenditures for the month of December from last, from November. So, there's been no changes from November. On the last page, tax, total, real estate tax collections as of January 16th, 2014, we are at 85 percent collection rate of $963,927. We build a total of $1,140,275, and the penalties have been applied for the January event, the deleverage, real estate tax, and personal property, as of this month. Personal property collected, total collected as of January 16th, 2014, is $120,757.61, and we're at 74 percent collection on the personal property. Do I have any questions?
Is there any question? I want to accept Treasury Report, so, no objections, so move by unanimous consent. Planning Commission and Boards?
Really don't have much to update, other than what's in the packet. We got an email today from Elaine Mill from PDC, it sounds like she's going to be available to talk middle of next week, so starting out this schedule for the conference and planning update. The, the two applications that the historic review board is going to be here next week, one is for 500 Tazwell, the former library building, and the other is for 207 Mason, the future builder park, just a minor, minor change there, have done the door, we said they're similar there. And for the former library building, we're reviewing a handicap permit inside entrance. Any questions?
Okay, does anyone have anything to add from the other boards, or the other departments?
I have one question for utilities. On the act of test report for the Capwells, we received comments, like we, we had that same note last month, and we said that we will respond, we responded, and you expect that to be off, actually?
Is there another question? The only other thing I'd like to add is apologize to the citizens for their lack notice on the street sweeping, we found out, uh, street, street sweeping, we found out late Friday evening, early Monday morning, that they'd be in town, and thanks to public works, they made a doors door, hopefully last minute to let everyone know that they would be in town, and we appreciate any maintenance that we can, we can receive, we do that, and we can get, get it. Also, I'd like to point out, if you're not on the Gazette, or if you've not seen our website, we have a new website now, and it is a work in progress, thanks to Amanda and Liddy, we've all spent, and all the partners have spent time, and we continue to spend time to update the website. It did come under budget, over 5,000 that we had budgeted this year, and please let us know if you have any feedback, the report now, and again, continue to put as much information on there as we can.
So, we're not really hiding information, we're just continuing to put it on the website?
Right. The whole, the whole website kind of fires, just when we organize it. Also, the auditors were scheduled for this week, and they had to reschedule, so they're late on a date, hopefully in the next couple of weeks to get them back here. We're also, no way, just throw that in, but we do get an audit every year, so set that right for sure. Also, we are working on our FY 14 and 15 budgets, department heads are working on them, and our first budget meeting will be February 27th, will be our first budget meeting, and we'll be busy the next couple of weeks, months, planning for that. The BML day is February 6th, and we do have some council members that will be attending, if they're not for the day. And the only other thing is, I will not be at the council meeting next month, I have my annual, the Junior Local Government Manager Conference, and that is February 19th through the 21st. So, I have to go, enjoy your chair.
Okay, oh, quiet. Next item, all business, public service, authority, regional wastewater update, and receipts for information.
Good evening. At the November meeting, I provided you an update on the, is this work? Yeah. On the recommendation, the draft recommendations that the PSA board was planning to provide to the board supervisors after the public hearing and public information session in September. That was finalized at the December PSA meeting, and a copy is attached to the report. The highlights of that are the potential removal of 12 properties, potential addition of four properties. With those actions, the property valuation in the proposed special tax district will be just about the same as it was when we started out. The board has not taken any action yet on those recommendations. Of course, a new board was just seated this week, as a matter of fact. In addition to that, the PSA board is reviewing the operational cost estimates that we provide by the town of Cape Charles, we hope to discuss that in our meeting next week, next Tuesday. And we have coordinated with the engineering firm, Hurt and Profit, they have finished the survey phase for the proposed survey, I'm sorry, service district, and they did a quick look to, to confirm that the previous cost estimate that we were working with, which was $1.8 million, is still reasonable, and they have confirmed that, and they hope to bring that down somewhat as the engineering phase continues. So, that's my report on the
So that's my report on the activities to PSA. And any questions?
I have one question. In the Business Association presentation, Mr. Proto stated in one of the meetings that, that the Business Association had raised concerns about the project, and it asked it to be put on hold until the issues that they raised were appropriately addressed. Has that, has that happened? Has there, is it-
That has, the letter was provided to council in September when we started going through the discussions of the work session. And, and our next work session, we will continue those discussions.
So that has-
So we have not, we have not made any other progress besides staff work that the council has asked us to do, and we've had to move our work session a couple times. So we need to get back to council with continuing the discussion and report back on the items that I've been asked to complete, and we have completed.
Okay.
And that will be discussed at the same, same time.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to the next item. Arts walk update?
Arts walk update.
Where's the board?
The board's over here, we'll get it. As you, as you know, we've been reporting periodically on the Howard Town project, which Mr. Proto mentioned this evening, is the Business Association has been that partner with the town, Citizens for Central Park and Art Center in that project. And through the first year of it, we were focusing on development and marketing campaign, as well as the website, the tourism website. And then, special events, the Harbor for the Arts Festival and other special events, trying to leverage the arts to create business opportunities and live in the community. And that has gone very well. One of the components of the project that has been progressing in parallel with that is the arts walk planning. And that was a nod toward certain components of the existing master trail plan to create certain venues within the town that performances and other community events could occur, and link that into the master trail plan. We created a, and my report tonight is on the progress of that. We created a steering committee to help guide that effort with the consultants, which is Land Studio, the same firm that did our master trail plan. And in your package is the report. They are, they're working on a final report now, but this is the report that was reviewed by the steering committee. And in a public session, where we got, it was open to public input, we didn't get very much public input. Bottom line, we're going to, we're going to request that you approve another opportunity for public input as part of this. But the priorities you see in the staff report that was established by the steering committee are, first, to create a series of points within the town, we call a wayfinding system, where, where people could, visitors could get information about the town. And that would be a town map, something that would convey a schedule of special events and that type of thing. Don't know exactly what it would look like, but it would be anchored by some sort of an iconic art piece that would be adopted by the town of Cape Charles. In your presentation package, you see that arts piece represented by a sail. That hasn't been decided, there have been no recommendations. It could be something like that. It could be, for example, the Cape Charles Lighthouse. Later on in your agenda tonight is the Waterman's Memorial, which will use a replica of the Cape Charles Lighthouse. It could be that, it could be anything. That's something to be decided. But at several points in the town, that would exist with a map and with some sort of special events. I'll call it a bulletin board, it could be an electronic version, whatever, to be able to guide visitors through the town and to participate in special events. The proposal would be to do it at the gateway entrance to the town, one there, someplace in the downtown area, at the harbor, which is one of the important entry points to the town, is becoming more important entry point to the town. And then on the beachfront.
Maybe if you turn that toward, folks, we've got drawings in our packet.
Sure.
That might be more informative if you address it up there.
And it'll, and we'll leave it up here for anybody that would like to look at it. So that was, that was indicated as the first priority, that we're lacking that. The second priority, if I remember correctly, was to improve the gateway to the town. And that is indicated up here, where we would hopefully partner with the Cape Charles Historical Society to put that entry point, that information node on their property, perhaps with a small parking lot. They do function now as an informal welcome center for the town. Their hours are limited, of course. And we would, we would do that. I have discussed that with Marion R. They've, she's discussed with the board. They are amenable to enter discussions with the town as a partner in that regard. And then, a little bit further west, on the entrance to town, part of our comprehensive plan now, and part of the VDOT 2020 plan, I believe, in 2020, is the possibility of a roundabout in that area, instead of that intersection we have now. And the idea was, would again, to be anchored that roundabout with some sort of signature arts piece to welcome people to the town. So that was the second priority. The third priority was, I think, the downtown business district. I've got right there. And that was a combination of development of the-